... It's like tomorrow. That is, I'm just going to tell you that. And I was there yesterday.
For the energy day.
Which is our kind of sponsors and people from my downtown.
Yeah.
It's not good.
Oh, yeah.
Says.
Yeah.
They think the kids love it.
One, two, three.
Yeah.
They have big time.
Yeah.
We need some. I know when we get a booth. Booth for that number. That was. Why?
Yeah, sure. That's first chair.
Okay. You don't get paid for it?
Yeah.
This is the first year.
This is the first year.
Yeah.
All right. Yeah. Yeah. It's okay. Or not.
Or not.
Yes, that.
When you figure it out.
Yeah.
I don't think so.
Yes. Or not.
Or not.
Or the fire.
Yes, that.
Yeah.
So, yes. I don't think it's a problem.
No, I'm frightened.
Help.
The couch.
They have.
It's a gun.
They have.
What happened to this?
Do we need to move that out?
No. No, I just abstained.
Okay.
Consent agenda.
Okay, I just wanted to see.
Yeah, no big deal.
We can move it.
I just, I thought it was on there.
I was just going to say we can move it out and go down there.
No, that's okay. Now, we're going to just figure out how to get out there.
Yes.
Yes.
This is right in the way. Oh, man. It's nice and cool in here today.
It's been hot the past couple days as well.
Yeah. It's usually warm in here, too.
All right, everybody ready? All right, 7:30 has arrived. I will call this meeting to order. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we have roll call, please?
Yes. Mayor Terry Wykam.
Here.
Vice Mayor Steve Sanger. Councilmember Darryl Gardner.
Here.
Councilmember Tanya Loomin.
Here.
Councilmember Bruce Seelaw.
Here.
Councilmember Chris Weisenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Jaclyn Wells.
Here. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next thing on the agenda is approve the agenda. Councilman Weisenberg?
I move to approve the August 6, 2024 City Council Agenda as presented.
Sir.
There's been a motion made and seconded to approve the August 6, 2024 City Council Agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting is closed and that, the motion passes with six yeas.
Thank you. Next thing on our agenda is to approve the consent agenda. Councilman Weisenberg?
I move to approve consent agenda August 6, 2024 as presented.
Second.
There've been a motion made and seconded to approve the consent agenda for August 6, 2024 as presented. Is there any discussion? I will be abstaining because there's a bill paid to my company. Seeing no discussion, please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting is closed. The motion passes with five yeas and one abstain. The one abstain was Mayor Wykam.
All right. Thank you. The next thing on our agenda is citizens' participation. This is a time where the citizens can, public can comment pursuant to Resolution Number 2C-1996. It sets a time limit of five minutes for anything that is not on the agenda. Is there anybody here that would like to speak to the council at this time? Seeing none, we will move on. The next thing on our agenda is a proclamation for the American Clean Power Week. And I'll read that proclamation now. The City of Rawlins proclamation. A proclamation recognizing American Clean Power Week, August 12 through the 16th, 2024. The benefits of wind energy as a renewable energy source and the importance of the industry as a major economic driver for the City of Rawlins, County of Carbon, and State of Wyoming. Whereas clean energy makes up nearly 16% of the nation's electric, electricity generation and provides enough clean power, clean energy to power over 68 million American homes. And whereas clean energy powers our state's economy, driving more than $6 billion in total capital investments to date, creating and sustaining jobs and providing millions of dollars in annual tax payments benefiting state and local governments. And whereas in 2023, Carbon County was Wyoming's number-two county in total assessed value of major electrics and independent wholesale electrics where wind power is categorized. And these properties, industrial rate property taxes that fund local governments and schools. And whereas Carbon County is home of two of the state's 10 largest power plants, both of which utilize wind power technology and is home of the state's largest planned wind power plant. And whereas Carbon County leads Wyoming with over 4,600 megawatts of total wind power capacity online and under construction. And whereas our cities, counties, and states, all of the above, strategy includes supportive clean energy, has proven to be a key component of our economic stability and growth. And with continued investment, we can remain at the forefront of energy-related economic development. Therefore, I, Terry L. Wykam, Mayor of the City of Rawlins, do hereby proclaim the week of August 12 through the 16th, 2024, as American Clean Power Week and encourage citizens to learn more about the economic benefits of wind energy in our community and to celebrate Carbon County's leadership and Wyoming's leadership in clean power production. In witness thereof, I have thereto set my hand and cause the official seal of the City of Rawlins, Wyoming, to be affixed this sixth day of August, 2024. Yes, sir?
Yes, I'm Lane Anderson, Director of Wind Operations for Pacific Corp.
Okay.
Based out of Casper, Wyoming, and thank you very much for that proclamation. And I'm here to answer anything. Didn't come prepared with anything, but thank you.
Well, I want to tell you "thank you" because you're the folks that make, make the taxes and give us the ability to run a much better city, county, and state.
Well, that's great to hear.
So, thank you.
Yes, no, thank you.
Does anybody have any questions of Lane?
We operate several wind farms here in Carbon County.
Yep.
I can list them off if need be, but I assume you know most of them.
Been there for most of the ribbon cuttings.
Yep.
Great. All right. Thank you, Lane. Thank you for coming. That's awesome. All right. The next thing on, yes, ma'am?
I believe Mr. Dowd.
Oh, I'm sorry. I wasn't looking up there. Yes, sir?
Senator, the mayor is behind you. I do appreciate you and the, and your team, and me and your team. Sorry, I can't make it down from Montana or I live, but I just wanted to speak on behalf of the city's proclamation. I greatly appreciate it on behalf of the industry broadly. I don't have to tell you all about the benefits that wind brings to your county, but we're incredibly appreciative of both the open arms that Carbon County brings to the wind industry and subsequently the investment that the industry can continue to make back in Carbon County and around the City of Rawlins. So, just wanted to share that I greatly appreciate the proclamation and just wanted to say thank you. And also likewise, happy to answer any questions if you have any, but I'll still let you move on with the regular business. But thanks for having me in.
Well, thank you for doing business in our proximity. I, you do make a better town, city, and state and county, and it's much appreciated. Does anybody have any comments or questions for? I see none. Well, thank you, sir. Thank you for zooming in.
And you.
All right. So, the next thing on our agenda is DDA, Main Street, and Hub reports. And I will turn the floor over to you, Pam.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. In front of you, you guys have a couple pieces of paper. The first is a big, big old thank you for Adventure Fest. I just kind of want to give a recap. Thank you, guys, for coming, participating, volunteering, all of the above. What a night, what a day. We had over 1,000 people on Friday night with Prime Cut playing. It was fun to have them back and playing publicly. Also on Saturday, it was around 3,000, so that weekend, 4,000 people. A lot of sponsors, a lot of participation, and of course, we can't do it without the volunteers.
Goodbye.
Goodbye. Another part of Adventure Fest this year was the Makerspace, which I did give you another flyer on also. And that is a program that the Business Innovation Hub is working with the University of Wyoming, Wyoming Innovation Partnerships, Innovation Workshops, and Manufacturing Works. And we've been having the Makerspace there. And it has been, talk about running, well, I was running on the fair today volunteering for, so that's all the kids. But we've had over 75 kids this summer in less than two months participate in this Makerspace, coming during the week and either running drones or running a 3D printer or, you know, it's just been an amazing opportunity for this community to have. Everything was free. So, it just, on top of all the 75 kids that participated and made things and adults, this is for adults, too, but all the kids that tried things on Adventure Fest. These, these core group, we called them the Maker Kids, decided that they wanted to have a booth at Adventure Fest. So, this was the middle of June when we opened up and everything. They decided they wanted to have their own booth at Adventure Fest. So, those kids and a few parents set up a booth on Friday night and Saturday for a couple hours and helped teach other kids how to do things and fly drones. And so, we had some additional parents, but I just think all the, all the fingers and minds and hands that were touched with this program. And we're, we're giving the University of Wyoming and all the funders a lot of data. They've never had the workshop trailer used the way it is, so it's kind of fun to be able to give them a lot of data. And again, 75 plus, we're still open. We're going to do a little transition for the rest of this month. We'll have it through the end of the month. Maybe transition with kids going back to school next week is if there's some adults that would like to come and use the Glowforge or the 3D printer. You just need to take a safety test online, but we're going to put all that, we're going to roll that out the end of this week. And for the next two or three weeks, let adults come in, have a couple open nights and maybe on Saturdays, and let people use some equipment that they've never used before. But a great program. Fall dates, you also have on this, I can't believe we're talking about Art Beat and Halloween and Christmas, but got the fall dates on the bottom of this. We have Art Beat, which will be the 4th and 5th of October, and then, of course, Trick or Treat on Downtown Streets on October 31st. The last thing I want to talk about, and he's not even here tonight, so I kind of love that he's not here. I want to shout out Vice Mayor Sanger. I, the flowers, the banners, cleaning restrooms, that man is invincible. So, we, about three years ago, or he, we, a group of people, put the automatic timers on our flower pots. And so, we were only having to water, so they were on a timer. They, there was a water below, there was a pump that was pulling up. That's been an amazing program that he created for us in the downtown to have our flowers look like they do. And so, like two weeks ago, I saw him, it was like 6:00 AM and I was coming into downtown and he was watering. And I thought, okay, well, the reservoirs must be empty because it's been really hot. And then, two days later, it was about 6:37, I was coming into downtown, and he was doing it again. And I thought, well, usually it's not been that hot. And so, I pulled up, I said, what are you doing? You were just watering two days ago. And he goes, I didn't tell you the timers aren't working this year. So, this whole summer, he has been watering every other day, all of the flowers in downtown. And so, and I, and he didn't tell anybody. And so, I'm publicly, I mean, I just, my heart was just like, he just, you know, and that's just how Steve is. But we, he didn't even tell the board that the timers weren't working and asked for, I mean, we have money in our, some small money we, but I just wanted you guys to know that the flowers look amazing because he's out there every other morning at 6:00 AM watering them. Didn't even know. So, that's my report. Little emotional, but just means a lot. So, couldn't do it without our volunteers and couldn't do it without our board members and couldn't do it without Steve Sanger.
He is amazing.
Yeah.
I have a question. The Brownstone Grant, how, where's that going?
The Brownfield's Grant?
Mm-hmm.
So, on the state program, which is the money that the state has that we're working on, that's moving forward. They just awarded the feasibility money, so we'll get that going. The four product, the four locations that the state were funding, the Phase 1 and Phase 2s are complete, and we should have a report back soon as the state finishes it. I know Ayers is finishing up. And then, the other component, the state money of the feasibility, which is three, which is Pine, the Pink, and the Ferguson, that'll happen this fall on the state money. And then, on the, on the Fed grant, we're just, Tom can answer that question on that.
So, do we still have buyers for some of those properties or potential buyers once the Brownstone?
The Brownfields?
Decide.
Brownville. That's okay. I did it.
Once the Brownville?
I did it forever.
Comes through and decides how much they're going to help. Do we still have buyers interested in those properties?
Well, again, it's assessments on whether it's state money or the Fed program, the half a million that the city has. That's, it's not, well, there technically could be some construction on it, depending on where it falls. But there are some buyers that are still interested on some of those properties, to answer your question, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Councilman Weisenberg?
Yeah, Pam, where are we at with the lights on the poles and stuff downtown with getting them all working and changing?
Yep. So, they're about 90% all on. There's a couple that need to be reprogrammed. They're still in the Christmas color. And that is because the guys from Tough Guys, we're just setting a date, they need to come over. So, I think everything's white except for five of them that are in red and green, and they are coming over next week. We have them. We have, um, Acme coming to do some electrical stuff. I don't want them to come over and reprogram and then have to bring them back over. So, I'm waiting for Acme. There are six poles on Fifth Street that are not turning on at all. So, before I have Tough Guys come over and reprogram to get them back to white because they're, they're on a little programming thing at the very top, which I probably wouldn't climb a ladder these days. Um, old days I would. But anyway, long story short, they're going to reprogram, but I did not want them to change or come reprogram till I knew it was electrical issue or, um, a programming issue on Fifth Street.
So, we're looking next week to get them fixed in?
Yeah, yeah. I'm hoping that everything will go, finish back to white, but we're, we're about ninety percent. There are two poles that, um, are not on at all, what, besides Fifth Street, and that is because, um, there was, um, electrical issues again. I hope, hopefully, we'll get Acme in here and finish all that up.
And then the possible crossing of the streets and stuff?
Yeah, so we'll start working on that this fall.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the question.
Yes?
I was in a, um, hot tub in Thermopolis recently, and there was a nice gentleman. He was a doctor from Utah, and he, we were talking about where we lived, and he always travels from Utah to Cheyenne to work in their hospital in Cheyenne. And when I said I was from Rawlins, he complimented our downtown. And it was, it was really unexpected, and I was very happy to hear it, um, but I thought it was important to share that it was, it was, it was a nice compliment, and it was nice to hear something positive about, about Rawlins from somebody that's an outsider, so.
Well, and that's because of people like this list, people like yourselves, people sitting here. It's, it's a village, but thank you, Jackie. Appreciate that, but it's a team effort.
I have heard that. I took a friend for a ride around. He wanted to see Rawlins, never been here. We drove on almost every street, and one comment he made was, uh, about our golf course and also that our downtown looks, looked great. And so, I think I've passed that on before, but it is nice to hear.
Again, it's, it's everybody. It's a village. So, thank you.
And he did say he's never stayed in Rawlins, and I said, next time you come through, skip staying in Cheyenne, stay in Rawlins and come tour our town, and he said he would, so.
And eat some of our great food.
Yeah.
I mean.
I mean, I pointed out all the great stuff, but, you know.
There's a lot of great stuff. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right. Next thing on our agenda is City Manager Report and Staff Report.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Got several updates tonight to share with you. Um, first off, we'd like to, uh, thank the Police Department for the National Night Out tonight. That was held at the park. Um, they always do such a wonderful job having their displays of their equipment and showing people and to be able to eat and different things. And so, thank them if you have an opportunity to do that. Um, this, this, this last week on the FEMA flood zone update, we received this week the final maps of the flood insurance study that, that FEMA performed. And I have those maps here and I will have those in my office if people want to come by and look at those maps to see where the flood zones are, and they are the final, um, flood zone, you know, the map. So, we have received the letter of final determination. Now, we've received the maps. Our next step in this process is, um, is to pass an ordinance through the City Council that will establish that area as a flood zone according to the maps and the final determination. And so, I will prepare that ordinance. I've received that from Homeland Security from Cheyenne on that ordinance, and it's a lengthy ordinance. It's about thirty-nine pages when, when I put it in Microsoft Word. And so, I will summarize that as to what's in there, how it affects us, and then I will bring that to council for, to, for, uh, council to either act on it or, you know, whatever the pleasure of the council will be at that time. But that is our next step, and then the rates go final in December of this year. We, we just talked about the Brownfields Grant. The city received a five hundred thousand dollar Browns, Brownsfield Grant. And our first step with that, um, right now is to put out an RFP to solicit, um, vendors, engineers, you know, professionals to help us with that. And what this grant is for is what they say Phase One, Phase Two of, of the Brownsfield program, and that is to select properties to study, and then we will have our, our contractor, we'll come in and assess those properties to see if there is in, in environmental hazards such as asbestos, petroleum products, and all those different types of things. So, we will put out the, the RFP, take all the quotes, and then we will select a vendor, and then we will select the properties for them to, to study. So, we will not do the actual mitigation, it's just the identification of the environmental hazards. So, um, that's where we're at currently on the Brownsfield. We have the RFP prepared, and tomorrow it will go out to the different vendors and be posted. Along with the Brownsfield Grant, the city will start again on our Dangerous Buildings Committee. And that goes hand in hand with the Brownsfield Grant on inventorying the properties that we would like to, to study, and that committee will work through the process of the Brownsfield Grant with that vendor. So, there will be updates and different things, but that committee will, we, we are going to revitalize that committee. There is about a half a million dollars in the Dangerous Buildings Fund, which we usually try to purchase the properties, work on them, and then sell the property, put the money back in the council that we always run on the same amount of, of money. So, um, from what I understand, we usually have a couple members of council on that committee, so we will work with the, the mayor to get, you know, let those individuals identified and invited to that Dangerous Building Committee. Um, we are going to put at the recycling center, we are going to put some recycling bins back out, and it'll be for cardboard at first, okay? So, you can drop off cardboard. Um, and that will, and that will open up this Friday, August ninth. And then the, uh, recycling center itself will remain open Monday through Friday, eight to five, and Saturday from eight to twelve. But we, we will put those out, and it's, it's on the Honor System, and so we will monitor to make sure that, you know, it's, it's being handled properly. Um, there, there was a lot of trash and things in, in there that it'd be a first time, and that's why we pulled the bins. So, we're going to start with cardboard again. Um, this last weekend at the shooting range here in Rawlins, there was a block tournament that was held out there on August third and fourth, and we had a hundred and sixty-four participants come to that.
Wow.
And they came from many states, uh, a long ways away, some people, for that, for that tournament. So, um, we just want to thank the Recreation Department and Shooting Range for their efforts in, in that. Um, an update on the Deer Culling Committee. I know that council has expressed their support to, um, to, uh, restart the committee so that we can discuss the deer culling methods. In looking at the history of the committee the last six, seven years, I could find where a resolution was passed in two thousand sixteen, which authorized the, uh, creation of a plan, of a deer-culling plan. Then in two thousand eighteen, a resolution was passed that established the committee. And then it also established the, it, it accepted the plan, and then it also talked about the, uh, coordination with the game and fish and the community. The following year, in two thousand nineteen, another resolution was passed authorizing essentially the continuation of those items. Um, and then the actual culling occurred in two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, and two thousand twenty-one, at, at which point the culling of the deer, uh, ceased, and the committee at that point was essentially disbanded at that point. We haven't held, you know, a deer-culling meeting, you know, after, after that to this current time. And so, um, usually a resolution is temporary in, in nature, so it would go year to year. And so, when council authorized the, the committee, it was for like a year or for a short period of time in which another resolution should have been put in place. Or it could go into ordinance, which sets it as law until it's taken off of the books. It would just remain in law and not year to year have to be, um, voted on again and adopted again. And so, in, in looking at this, we feel that we need either a resolution or an ordinance to restart the committee. And we, we feel that the plan, you know, is a very good plan. It, it was written very well, and it could be a good starting point for that committee, you know, to, uh, look at that, uh, plan again and, and get that re-approved through council. I have spoken with the Game and Fish. They have two representatives on that committee. They are very interested in putting two people back on that committee. Council has assigned two individuals on that committee, and then we also have some staff members from the city that serve on that committee. And so, what we recommend at this point is to get the committee back either into resolution or into permanent ordinance based upon what council would, would like on that. And then we also need to write some bylaws for that committee that, that establishes authority and how that committee will operate and the different things, that they are responsible, and then how that will flow through to council. So, um, so anyway, we can discuss that, but it either needs to be put back into resolution or, like I said, it needs to be put into ordinance. We feel that what's out there was temporary for either a year or two or a culling season, and we feel that that is, um, fulfilled. We, we've been through that, so we are kind of at Phase One as far as the committee goes, but we are not with the information that, that committee deals with. A lot of that stuff's written and can be adopted real easy after, after that, so.
Councilman Wells?
Um, can, can we reach out to previous committee members? Because I feel like they put a to, a lot of time and effort into that committee, and I think it would be beneficial to at least invite them to be a part of it again, um, because I don't want them to feel like their efforts did not go unnoticed.
Honorable Mayor? I, I can tell you, I visited with, uh, um, the two citizens that were?
Diane?
Uh, Diane and, and Chris Autumn. And, um, they really don't want to be involved, but they would, uh, definitely, well, I wouldn't say definitely, but I'm, I'm just sure that they would, uh, come as ex officio or whatever and help.
Okay.
Uh, advise, take a stand this back up and get going.
I just don't want them to feel like they were appreciated.
Yeah, no, they, they really don't want to be involved anymore. That's what they told me at two different occasions. Um, but they also, I explained to them, you know, you guys have strong leadership skills, and I would like you to be involved in, in, in getting this new committee going again. This is, this is kind of ancient history at this point, but that's what they told me the last time, and I believe it's probably still true.
And?
And I think, I feel that instead of having this resolution, I think, this is just me, I think we ought to really strongly consider doing this in the fashion of an ordinance so we don't have to address it year after year after year. Now, there never were bylaws for that committee ever written. It was, uh, it was done on a Take Fifty-Six permit, I think is what it is, and, uh, the, two of the game and fish people that were on that committee, one's retired and one moved or something. Is that correct, Tom?
Correct. One of them is still with the game and fish that was here at All Three that time. Their game order, I believe, their biologist is new.
Right. But I'm sure they would participate in, how they participate, just so you notice they're the ones that go around and count, do the, the count to see is there growing, uh, what's the proper amount to cull, you know, that sort of thing. They, they kind of lead the pack. But, uh, so the game and fish has to be involved, but I, I personally would like to, instead of doing the resolution style, I would like to do the ordinance style so that it's a,
Standing thing?
It's a permanent thing and that we don't have to readdress it year after year. The game and fish will regulate how?
How many?
How many to regulate the herd down to keep it at a, a manageable size.
I thought they figured out how many were culled also by the statistics that they gathered as a committee concerning car wrecks and, um, deer interacting with the public.
I don't?
Wasn't that also included in their determination on deer culling?
Councilman, I, I think there, that there is a in-depth report that looked like it was either a work session or a council meeting that has a lot of those statistics in there.
It was a work session, yeah.
It was a very impressive report. It had, it had, you know, a lot of those things. Um, I know from, from my viewpoint, three years, it, it's hard to see trends or the results, but I, I, I think we need more years to be able to kind of tell. But, um, there is a report that I could, could share from like two thousand eighteen. The, uh, City Manager at the time was Scott Hannum, that, that, that had that report, and it's a very in-depth detail. Uh, it had addresses places of events.
Right. I was on the council at that time, yeah.
Yeah, we were able to, uh, find that report. We haven't had much since then.
And you said there were two council members on this committee?
Uh, that was the Dangerous Building.
Oh, the Dangerous Building, but not this one?
Yeah. The members were two game and fish, two citizens, and I believe the police chief and maybe one other officer. I think there were six that were appointed to that. And we will draw up some draft bylaws and different things and get those to council as quickly as we can that will reestablish the committee and the composition of that.
And we advertised for those before who would be on the, for citizens?
Correct. We advertised, people applied, and they have been appointed to that.
And then they were appointed to that.
So, we do have that committee. I would just like to get the bylaws and get it into ordinance so that we can establish the authority.
So, I was about a big part of this was education. It wasn't just, absolutely. This is, we're just going to go out and kill all the deer. No, it was also educating the public and going in the schools and educating the kids on how to. And I didn't see a lot of that with the previous committees. Um, they seemed pretty focused on, um, the calling and the gathering of information, which they did an excellent job of.
I know in order to get the Game and Fish Chapter Fifty-Four, we had to have it. I know in order to get the game and fish chapter fifty-four, we had to have in ordinance and ordinance against feeding the deer, for instance, and that is in ordinance. So, so there, there was some education, some things, but we really strongly want to look at all angles of this. And I think education is a huge part of that, that we will bring forth how we recommend that we do that.
And the gun we specifically bought to do this, do we still have it? Because I thought it was brought up to sell that at one point.
It, it, it was discussed, but we still hold no-
We still own it. Okay.
Those weapons.
The amount of deer that this take permit is pretty much established by the game and fish, just by herd size. I think the other information was just to help educate people on what not to do, like don't feed your deer, and, and the dangers of some of those things, and, but the, the goal is to maintain a herd size. And when the herds get, herd gets too large, and they go to different parts of the town and count them. And like, for instance, on, on where I live, on Ward One, below the tracks, there, they never did any culling down there whatsoever, because within the city limits, there was not a good backstop, if you will. And so most of that culling took place up against the uplift or in the outlaw bowl or such like that. But the game and fish is the ones that set the numbers of take. And then, I don't, I don't know, has the city ever took the maximum amount? But it was up to that amount. And I know the two years they did it while I was here, the first two years, they did not reach that number or even close, just for various reasons.
And just so the public's aware, they take the meat, and then they have a lottery.
They test it, and then they have a lottery.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They test it for chronic wasting disease, yeah.
Councilman Eisenberg.
On the deer culling, I, I believe maybe to, a, a resolution would be fit for this year, to kind of get the committee back together and moving and processing with the game and fish to get this data study started, and then ordinance brought forth. So if we could get moving on that, we could have a resolution, one vote on a resolution, three votes on a ordinance, you know, to put it into effect. So I would, I would think a resolution come forth first if we're gonna do something like this, and then-
So it could be faster.
Yeah, push a resolution with everything after. We could at least get the stuff started.
It would be quicker. I agree with that.
And the committee could have time to get the bylaws and that kind of things that you would like to see in place for an ordinance.
I also think, though, that possibly a representative of the council could be on that. I'm not volunteering, by no means, I'm just saying. It might help out with some kind of reporting back to the, the council and give a little bit of an insight, you know, that way.
Did you have something, Councilman Garnon?
No.
Okay.
I, I know, and I, I did speak today with one of those former committee members today in my office, and, and they said that for each of those three years that they pulled twenty-five each year, for a total of a three-year total of seventy-five, is what they did. So I, I, I have reached out to one of those former committee, and I will reach out to the other, as you requested in the next few days, and then. So my understanding is, is we will bring a resolution to council that will reestablish the committee, and then look at the plan that was adopted, make sure that everything in there is still what council would want in the, in that plan, and then we can have that committee established fairly quickly.
And, and Vanita, you had something?
I did. I, I just wanted to ask clarification on, in regard to the, the committee. Is this, what is the objective of this committee at this point? Is it to, to determine whether culling is needed or to cull?
Well, actually both. If it's not needed, then there would be no culling. But the need would be established by the game and fish and their recommendations, is what I believe. Because the game and fish will recommend, you know, you're over this many deer, and give permit to the city to take that many deer. It isn't a random number. It's, it's after they've done, you know, they, they go out and do the, count the population of them, and then they decide. Like the last time, I think they decided that we could take up to fifty-three deer, and there were twenty-some, two of which were not edible. The rest of them were given out to lottery-style to people to draw for, to fill their freezers with. So, I mean, the game and fish might come up with the fact that, no, your herd isn't, isn't large enough to even do it. So it's gonna depend on what the game and fish's recommendations are, is what we should follow. Councilman Eisenberg?
So with that, uh, do, does this need to not be an advisory committee, or should this be? Because advisory is gonna be coming back with advice or what they feel. Should it be like more of an action committee? Because they actually perform the, help perform the culling and stuff like that in the past. Committee did.
I think it's more of an action committee, but I would want to have the council stay informed. Does that make sense?
That was why, recommendation of a council member, too, so.
And wasn't the, um, before, when they had the committee, didn't they have clear guidelines as to what the committee was for? They had a statement of, you know, what their committee was about?
Honorable Mayor, Councilman Lumen, the committee, from what I could tell, was established as part of the resolution. And the only thing the resolution said of the establishment of that committee was who was on it, that it was composed of certain individuals. And that's all that I could find that granted authority to that committee. Now, that's what I could, could find within those resolutions. And it was like in the eighteen, two thousand eighteen resolution, and it just said, there will be a committee, and it will be composed of. And that's why I, I feel like within the resolution, or the bylaws, we need to establish at least the authority or council's, um, uh, direction as to what they were on that.
Purpose.
Yeah, purpose. That's what I think. And there is a mission statement that was created, and there were a lot of things, but I want to get that back to make sure that this is what council wants to adopt, you know, what we want. We will get that back in from council, and for the current time, it'll be in resolution form, which would be essentially for one culling season or for one season. And then it would either have to go to ordinance, or we'd have to adopt another resolution to further that.
And a lot of the things that you're asking about are kind of set forth in that take permit, fifty-six permit. It talks about, you know, why and how and all that. I mean, it's, it kind of outlines most of that. Tanser a lot of those.
But it's still our police officers that do the shooting, not Wyoming game and fish.
The game and fish cannot play an active role. It states it right in that permit, unless they've changed it. But the one I read, it said they cannot take an active role, game and fish cannot take an active role in the actual culling.
And we will have that outlined in the bylaws.
So you might get a copy of that take permit from the game and fish-
Yes.
And then maybe give us all a copy of it, so we can become more familiar with how, the mechanics of how that works.
And it's in that plan as well that he referenced?
Right.
That is very detailed.
Right. It's kind of the-
Overview.
It's the outline that we have to follow, yeah.
The last update that I want to give is, see if I can receive some direction from council. So on our employee policy manual, I have here what is currently adopted by council, and it goes back to two thousand eight. And then there was some changes in it in two thousand twenty-one. There was some amendments. And then from this, a committee was formed, and we have a separate document that was written and then presented to council through a series of work sessions, not to where there was a vote or any, or it hasn't gone through legal yet to even get to council. So we have two different documents, and what our recommendation is, and we, we seek the guidance of council, is we would like to begin with the oh-eight version. And then what we would do is redline, if, if you will, is the term. We would start from here and show what the changes are to come to a new document, so that you could see that this was here, and then we would explain why, you know, you know, this was added, taken out, or changed. This document is just a new, new document. All sorts of new language in it, new policy, lots of changes from the original, which is just new and change. And a lot of what is in this document is not here, or it isn't even presented here. It's just like new language that was put in. And, and there isn't a real comparison from the old document to the new document as to how they arrived at that. So what we, we recommend is, is instead of like a full manual, what, what we would, would recommend is that, is that we bring to council a series of policies, okay, individual policies, which are much smaller than, than this document. But with, within here, all of the different chapters in there would like represent a separate policy. So we would start here, go through here to create individual policies that we would bring to council. And what, what we would do is bring to council what that overall manual would look like with the different policies that we intend to, uh, to, to write and to present to council in, in there. And then each, probably one a month, or if we could keep pace, once a meeting, we would present a different policy, that we would go over from start to bottom, so that council understands everything that, that is in there, and then we would ask for that to be accepted by council into the handbook, if you will, that would be different policies. We would, and then we, we would also research and find if there is guidance through the Fair Labor Standards Act, the Family Medical Leave Act, and we will reference that in the new policy, as to where that is at, which is not currently in this manual here. It's, it's just a summary of those documents that was put in, but we would reference the actual language from those items in here. And then we also feel that a lot of the items contained in there should be discussed with council, like on the leave policy. It's been in place for a lot of years. We would, we would bring recommendations to that if, you know, for changes for that or whatever, or council can always weigh in as to how, that, that, you know, what those limits are on the leave banks, the different types of leave. But it is a good time to look at all that and to see if we have the right types of leave and the different things that council would expect in that handbook. So it is kind of a research project, but it's also just a step-by-step process, so that we can come up with a, with our employment policy. And then we also recommend we do the same with that with financial policy. Currently, we have one financial policy that is in resolution from several years ago, like two thousand eighteen. And we, we feel that we need several financial policies in place. And investment policy, cash reserve policy, fund under reserves, purchasing limits, all those different things that we feel that we need. So we will work on those things in those small policies, and then we will bring those to council, and then we would get a legal opinion, obviously, on those. And we feel that, that that way council can know each step of the way, where we're at, what we're talking about, and what those policies are and what they mean, and that would just, smaller chunks than, you know, a full document, so.
Did, did you have something, Councilman Eisenberg?
Yes, um, I got several things, but I'll speak just on those policies right now. I believe that the document's too large in my own self, and I appreciate the fact that you guys are gonna bring a redline copy. What I believe is that a policy should be a, a, a small little book, because a policy is something you sign and you go by and you're bound by. Okay? A lot of this stuff is, to me, is like a handbook, right, employee handbook, with your family medical leave act stuff, all that stuff. So you're signing off on a hundred percent of what you are saying you read at the start of your employment, which I would go out on a whim and say, zero percent of our employees have read a hundred percent of that policy. Right? Uh, because I'd be the same way. So I believe we need to shorten a policy into a little handbook, a little booklet type deal, put this as a handbook for the employees to, so they can reference back, right? Because when you sign your job, to start your job, you're signing that you're gonna follow the policy. A lot of that is not in a policy. It's a handbook, a manual, right? A prime example is when the, um, police, the board for the police went through and did theirs, right? If you remember before, it was thick. When we got it to review, it was thin. And that's exactly what they did. They took a lot of that stuff out. So I truly believe that's the way I, I'd like to see it. Because when you're signing something saying you understand the policies, you're signing something saying you understand a hundred percent of everything that you supposedly read. So.
The, the other thing I would point out with a, with a personnel policy, it's written for the personnel. And if it's tied to like the current one, and then you tie it to how the state law changed and such like that, we need, we absolutely need to do that. But it's, it's designed for the personnel to read and understand. So it has to be something that the average employee can read it and, and understand it without having a four-year degree in it. And so I agree with Councilman Eisenberg that it, it has to be concise, accurate, and copacetic with state law would be the requirements I'd like to see. Councilman Lumen?
Couple of things. The newer one is thicker and is a more modern language. It isn't, it is for the twenty-first century, not for, um, when'd you say, two thousand eight, two thousand eighteen? So it covers a lot of the things that the other one didn't.
Yeah, there's lots of-
And that's why it is thicker.
Sixteen years.
Yeah. And the, our laws have changed a lot over sixteen years. Harassment, that has changed. Um, like you said, family leave, that has changed. Cell phones, that has changed. And if you want it in a language that they understand, we can't just have a policy says, we're gonna follow this long description of what the law is, like, kind of like an executive session, and put that in there. That's what we're gonna follow. Making the employee have to look that up and figure out legalese to figure out what in the heck that means. I don't want that either. So I don't want us to be so concerned about making it so small that we miss the point of getting the, having the employees understand what they are, what their benefits are, what leave is expected, the things that they have as far as benefits and rights and obligations.
Sure. Honorable Mayor, Councilman Lumen, our intent is to pass- Honorable Mayor, Councilwoman Lumen, our intent is to pass several policies, and then we would have an employee handbook that would be a summary of those policies that are pertinent to the employee. Now, the hard part of that is, is there'll be a lot of references in there to the policy. You know, policy A is going to include leave policy. In the employee handbook, we would say, "You are entitled to two weeks vacation for zero to five years," or whatever, so that it's spelled out. And, and that, and the actual handbook would be in every vehicle, every office, but, but it would not be the entire amount of what those policies state. It would be a more precise summary of those things to where they know if they have an issue, they could look it up, and they know exactly where to go in policy to find that. That's our intent.
Councilman Wells?
Thank you for clarifying. I do think that is a better way to go. That's how the state does it, and I think that, I, I do think it's important to completely cover it in policy, but have an easy tool available to our staff, so I'm all for it.
Size of it matters not, it's the content and-
Right.
Agreed.
I can tell you, no one's going to read that big one.
Well, this won't even fit in a glove box of a vehicle.
Well, and we, we didn't get a chance to even really read that. It was thrown on our desk, say yes or no, and we all said no, and no one made a motion. That's why there was no official vote. And I believe you're going about it the correct way. Stop, dissect, and see what's wrong, what's missing, correct that, then condense it down into a handbook. I think that's absolutely the way to go. Councilman Weisenberg?
That's exact, that's what I was saying to, you know, exactly what you're explaining. That's exactly what I'm saying we need to do for that. So the other thing, so I just had a few questions on a few things that you reported on there, Tom. The FEMA floodplain in ordinance, okay? So what happens if the council don't accept the floodplain? So we can have an answer right now, because the fact is, is we're talking about 100-year, 300-year, 150-year, whatever they are, floodplain that never happened in Rawlins, Wyoming, and it takes up a lot of the residents in Ward 1. And it's kind of a bad deal, and we all know that messing, or with the federal government, even if we try to mitigate this, it's going to cost the city a lot of money potentially throughout years, and there's still no guarantees that FEMA's going to come back and say, "Oh, thank you, guys. You guys did your job." And no, 90% chance are going to come back and say, "Sorry about your luck. This is what we found." So what happens on that aspect?
Honorable Mayor, Councilman Weisenberg, so FEMA has a lot of funding for, for different projects, for, for, you know, you know, different needs of communities. We would lose all FEMA funding for the foreseeable future. We would not receive any of that within our community. And obviously, if there was a flood, we would not be covered through FEMA for that. And we also believe that the reach of that may go even further to other federal-type funds, with that being the federal government. And we are in a position right now with our water and other, you know, infrastructure, where we are even going to be tied to federal sources. And that would put some of those sources, not probably all of them, some of those would put that into jeopardy with that agency knowing that we did not go with the FEMA flood zone. I think it would impact other federal funding that we have.
Can we have a workshop on that, Tom, where we can go further in depth?
Sure.
You know, get that information out to us, to where we can kind of look it over, think about it for a while, then have a workshop where we can ask some intelligent questions and have some, some things that are more, so we're not just guessing about everything. We can have some assurances of certain things.
Sure. I'm happy to arrange for that.
I think that would be the way to proceed with that.
I'm happy to arrange-
Is that acceptable with you, Councilman Weisenberg?
Yeah, I, I want to say, I understand what you're saying 100%. I'm asking this question so the public understands and knows, so when this comes forward, that it, you know, it is going to affect people's insurance rates and stuff like that in the nature of that. I, I want that to be known to the public. One reason why, if it goes through council and it passes, why the, that is the case, because we have a chance at losing all, the potential of a lot of federal funding. So that's what I was looking for, is for you to answer that, for, just for the public. I understood myself what, what the possibilities are, so thank you for that. Next thing is, is the Brownfields grants for the $500,000. I thought we had already chosen the properties for those through a workshop or a town hall we had, and then we come back and discuss the properties that we had chose as a council to do, I believe. I thought that's the case.
I don't know that. I was not part of those committee meetings or that selection. You know?
Honorable Mayor and Council, so in the actual grant application, it does list suggested properties. And that was, that list was, come about with help of the state people, and so it's not stuck in stone. So that's why when we hire the QEP, the Qualified Environmental Professional, which is what Tom said, that's getting ready to go out, the QEP RFP, it's a alphabet soup, they will go through and re, look at that list, because that's been a while, too. So to answer your question, that is not in stone. We can change that.
Okay, so, because I have sat on that-
Yeah, the dangerous buildings, yeah.
In the dangerous buildings before, and so I would just like to see that list of properties given to the Dangerous Building Committee that's in, when that is put back in. So, just so, because I mean, that was a recommendation then, at that point in time, and it's a lot better to go that way.
That is correct, Council. Yeah, that it was a recommendation. And in the RFP, QE, for the QEP, Qualified Environmental Professional, it, they will go through and say, "These are the properties we feel would have the biggest bang for the buck," and then present that to you guys.
Okay.
Good. Okay, thank you.
Last thing. Sorry. The recycle bins, thank you for getting those out. Now, putting the cardboard back out, I want to know if we are going to kind of move forward, possibly also, and put those on the south side by the fire station or inside the, build a little fenced area. I know we had, it had been discussed prior to maybe utilize that, so hopefully that would work a little bit better for the citizens. I know I had discussed it about putting it in the corner, right there in the fenced-in area, just fencing in a little area, and if we had to lock it up at night or however, we got to do cameras to, to prevent all this, I just want to know if we can still do something like that, too.
Sure, I'll look into that.
All right, thank you.
Anything else, Tom?
Board.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have anything for Tom? All right, next thing on our agenda is the city attorney report. Do you have anything for us, Panita?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. Just a couple of things. I have been working with Lynn on updating the application for the 24-hour catering permit as well as drafting a proposed resolution for timing and due dates for when those applications are due. So that's in the process. I've been working with Tom closely on all these things that he just went through. And the nuisances, I am close to the end of my first draft of the nuisances to, to clarify how they're presented. It's just been incredibly time-consuming trying to add that, kind of parse them apart, and then cross-reference the entire code to make sure that it's consistent throughout. My next step is going to be to work with some of the other departments to make sure that the way we are, that I propose my draft, that it is actually feasible, timing, and in terms of the types of issues that we are updating the language to, that it is aligned with, that, and definitions are all aligned, and then that will be brought to council as well. I, my proposal at this point is also to move abandoned vehicles into the motor vehicle code. It's how the state handles it, it's how several other municipalities handle it, especially in regard to how the title A is handled. So that's going to be my next step. And working with, also with Parks and Rec, with the, with several of their boards, with actually several of the boards, shooting range advisory board is also looking to update some of their bylaws. They have a very active committee that is really thinking through a lot of the things and bringing forth a lot of great ideas in regard to keeping costs down, utilizing volunteers a little bit better, how to get volunteers certified through NRA and other national shooting organizations, to be able to provide some of that additional oversight, open the ranges for, for additional hours, bring in more tournaments, and just kind of take, take a lot of pride in, in what they do, and it's, there's some interesting things that I'm excited to be working with them. But I won't spill the beans yet, but it's, it's coming this way. Nothing further.
Councilman Weisenberg, did you have something?
I was just waiting on direction.
You talking with your hands?
Oh, yeah. Sorry.
All right. Is, is that all, Panita?
It is, Your Honor, Honorable Mayor.
Okay, Your Honor. I can tell what you've been doing. Okay, now, the next item is direction from city council to city manager. Does anybody have anything? Councilman Weisenberg?
I want to kind of touch base on the 24-hour catering permit for the resolution. Do we need to put that into an ordinance in this? What I would like to see here is something that maybe we, we review other policies or procedures from other municipalities to see what they do, because the fact is, is, is there's no consequence for coming to us on a whim, on last-minute ask, and we have to hold a special meeting. And I stated to the last individuals those here that our time is just as valuable as their time, and we have to take our time out of our families' lives and everything else to hold a special meeting for one individual or one company at a time, and, and it's happening multiple times. I would really like to see something put in place where there's a, a fee installed or a fine, however we, we want to, need to word that or something, of such to detour these, these individuals from asking for that and making them do their due diligence for the council's sake and come in in a timely manner.
Those are, those are fantastic points, and actually, we have looked closely at all of those items through, across the state, making sure that they're, that they comply with Title 12, which is the State Alcohol Code, as well as timing requirements. What's, how do we time this? And because our council meetings are twice a month, sometimes if you were to say 15 days, if it's a long month, it's going to be longer than that. So we have taken all of those matters into consideration. We actually took a bunch of applications and their regulations, and we cut and faced it. We physically cut all the pages, we made a, a little patchwork that we're going to put together and add some of the other requirements that are going to suit our council and our city. And while we do not necessarily have a penalty in there, there is a deadline. If the submission is not within 30 days, it's kind of a too-bad-so-sad situation.
Councilman Wells?
This is a totally different subject. One of my counties is Washtenka County, and in Warland, they have a program where the citizens can utilize the city to get their sidewalk replaced, and then instead of a huge expense all at once, they can put it on their water bill every month. I would love to look into that for the people that potentially can't afford to get their sidewalks replaced, but could afford a little extra on their water bill each month.
I will, I'll-
But I do know it's in Warland, so they, they do do that there.
Oh, I did have one, one other small update from legal. It is in regard to, in regard to traffic citations, and more about equipment citations, considering bringing forth and working with the RPD in creating another level of citations. So for example, somebody has a tint, or they have a registration that's expired, and rather than immediately being, you know, either, right now, the options are a warning or a citation, and rather than just those two options, provide the officers a little more discretion and provide a fix-it. You have 10 days to fix this. And sometimes that's realistic because of the way people are paid, and it's yet another option, yet, and we give people some grace, and there's yet a penalty with that if they don't fix it, fix it within the 10 days. And so I'm working with RPD in-
Thank you.
-coming up with the language and how that would work. It's very common in California and Texas. There's other means, I'm not sure about Wyoming, if it's common, but it is common in other places in the U.S.
The, the town I'm from, Torrington, they, they used to, like with loud mufflers, they'd give you three days to fix it and, and such like that, and you had to drive by the police station and show them that you had it fixed, and because there were people that liked loud mufflers, and, and they gave us three days or a week or something, very short time to get it fixed. And then if we didn't, we got the ticket stuck, but other than that, they would reverse the ticket. So I think as long, if it serves to cure the problem, that's the goal. So not necessarily write tickets, it's to get the problem fixed. So I think that's a great idea. Councilman Weisenberg?
The other thing I want to ask and talk to you about, Tom, is I took you for a drive-through Ward 3, right? Just to show you some of the stuff, this individual emailed about some properties, and I want to know where we're at with this. I know it was just the other day, but where do we stand? This is getting out of hand 100%, and I'm talked to all the time about it, and something really needs to get done. I mean, we have people putting stuff outside of their lawns, on sidewalks, blocking sidewalks and everything else. It's not, it's not acceptable.
Yes, Honorable Mayor, Councilman Weisenberg, we, we have met a couple times with our enforcement teams, and we are, you know, working on that plan. Yeah, so we are, we are working on it. Our, our major issue currently is staffing. That's our, that's our issue right now, is we've, we've got open positions, and that's what we're trying to work through. We are down enough that it is taking toll on us. I know that sounds like an excuse, but we are working to get the most out of the staff that we have and devising means by which we can enforce.
All right. Right, we ready to move on? All right. Next thing is approve the minutes of July 30th, special council meeting. I would entertain a motion. Councilman Weisenberg?
I move to approve the special city council meeting minutes of July 30th, 2023, as presented.
Second. And a motion made and seconded to approve the special city council meeting minutes of July 30th, 2023, as presented. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting has closed, the motion passes. But Councilmember Wells, you were not present at that meeting? That was the-
I was, I was at the special council meeting.
You were?
Yes.
Oh, okay, I apologize.
Yeah.
Online voting is closed, the motion passes was by Gaze, and one abstained, and one abstained was Councilmember Gardner.
Wait a minute. There was only four people at that meeting?
There was only four there, so-
Oh, I wasn't there either. I should have suspected.
Wait a minute, hold on one sec. I didn't write them down.
I wasn't there.
I was there.
So you seconded it, right?
Yeah.
I'll second.
Okay, so we'll put, will you accept that?
Yes.
Okay.
I did not have it in front of me, I apologize. So Councilmember Seale- So Councilmember Seeloff, you want, you would like to abstain?
Sustain, yeah, yeah.
Abstain, sustain?
All right, so online voting has closed, the motion passes with four ayes and two abstains. And two abstains with Councilmember Gardner and Councilmember Seeloff. Thank you.
All right. Thanks. Next thing on our agenda is awarding of, uh, a request for bid. Uh, Councilman Lumen?
I move to approve awarding of the request for bid on the city of Rawlins, Wyoming, surplus 1998 American La France Fire Engine to the town of Saratoga, Saratoga Fire Department as a donation.
Okay.
Been a motion made and seconded to approve awarding of the request for bid, RFB, to the city of Raw, on the city of Rawlins, Wyoming, surplus 1998 American La France Fire Engine to the town of Saratoga and Saratoga Fire Department as a donation. And is there any discussion? And Alan, would you come tell us about that?
Sure, Honorable Mayor and Council, um, the town of Saratoga is pretty excited to have this truck in their fleet. Their, I don't have, don't memorize the thing, but it's, their newest pumper is like very much older than that. This is going to help out their ISO rating by a whole bunch and those kinds of things. Um, in fact, the other day then, when the, we had our guy here doing our pump testing, and he actually pump-tested that truck for them while he was here and stuff, too. So one of those things that's moving forward, that kind of thing. Um, any other questions, I'd be happy to try to answer those for you guys.
Councilman Weisenberg?
Um, Alan, I, I'm pretty sure they did not join the, the county fire district, correct? Because
I have no idea. I couldn't tell you one way or the other. I don't know that for a fact.
I couldn't remember, because if this is donated over to Saratoga, uh, and they're a part of the county fire district, then it could be reallocated anywhere if that, if that's the case, but, correct?
I don't think they did.
I don't think they were. That's what I'm saying.
I don't have knowledge of that, so I don't know.
Okay.
I know that the requesting we had came specific from Saratoga Fire Department and the town same clerk of Saratoga.
I, I think they're one of the communities that didn't join. I just don't, my thoughts are, we donate it over, it goes to Saratoga, then it gets pulled from Saratoga, goes to Bags or Hannah or, you know, somewhere different, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So it stays in the county. Any question, any more questions to Chief Robinson? Hearing none, please open online voting. And thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Online voting is open. Online voting is closed, the motion passes with six ayes.
All right, thank you. The next thing on our agenda is Wyoming Association of Municipalities. I, uh, I'm just going to read this. "The city clerk is responsible for the preparation, execution, and archiving of all city council documents as prescribed by state law and city code. Other duties include administering beer, wine, and liquor licenses, administering special event permits, archiving city council documents, office proceedings, ordinances, and resolutions, business and animal licensing, maintaining city council meeting materials, providing notary public services, publicizing legal notices, recording office documents, issues business licenses for alcohol beverage, alcohol beverages, auctioneers, bottle clubs, bingo and pull tabs, circus, carnival, and amusement shows, animal livestocks and kennels, non-resident business pawnbrokers, peddlers, solid waste, haulers licenses, special events permits, security officers, and taxicabs." And with that, um, Wham Cat was looking for an official nomination. And I have decided to nominate, uh, Lynn Shearer, our clerk. Uh, I have filled out the proper documents. And the reason I chose to nominate Lynn, uh, they talk, you know, all the qualifications. Her hobbies include exploring Wyoming and crocheting. She served as a city clerk in the state of Maine for eight years. Lynn has been a tremendous asset to the city of Rawlins, assisting the city manager and city council to stay organized, update, and informed. A city clerk has so many duties, and she performs each and every one of them with professionalism, enthusiasm, and positivity. She is courteous and, I'm sorry, can't read my writing, and takes pride in her workmanship, uh, work with the staff and the community, and always strives to overcome the everyday challenges that her job brings. She is always the first to arrive, the last to leave at city functions to ensure the smooth flow and always has a smile. She's always seeking to learn more so she can better serve the city. For these reasons, I take great pleasure in nominating Lynn Shearer for the Wham Cat of the Year Award.
Do you need a second?
Well, that's my motion.
Okay. I'll second.
Okay. There's been a motion made and seconded to nominate Lynn Shearer for the Wham Cat of the Year Award. Is there any discussion? Mr. Sheer?
I know I'm probably, Honorable Mayor, Honorable Council. I know I'm probably a little
You have to state your name.
Jim Shearer.
We don't know that, but you have to.
Okay. I know I'm a little bit prejudiced, but I want you to understand how hard this lady works for the city of Rawlins. It's rare that she's home before seven o'clock at night, very rare. Many times she fills in and do, does things on Saturdays. Couple of times she's come in on a Sunday to get things done. And I really think this is a great honor for her. Thank you.
Welcome. Any further discussion? Please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting has closed, the motion passes with six ayes.
All right, thank you, and thank you. Good luck, Lynn, and well deserved, and I hope it goes well. All right, the next thing on our agenda is an ordinance amending the Rawlins Municipal Code. I would entertain a motion. Councilman Wells?
I move to approve first reading and waive the reading of the ordinance amending Rawlins Municipal Code Title V, Business Taxes, Licenses, and Registration under Section 508, Alcoholic Beverages, to add Section 508.580, General Penalties for Violation.
Second.
Been a motion made and seconded to approve the first reading and waive the reading of the ordinance amending Rawlins Municipal Code Title V, Business Taxes, Licenses, and Registration under Section 5.08, Alcoholic Beverages, to add Section 5.08.580, General Penalties for Violations. Is there any discussion? And I will have you, Panita, explain, uh, what this is about.
Uh, honorable counsel, this is verbatim from the Title 12 of the Wyoming State Statute. The objective is just to provide an additional mechanism for enforcement or penalties. Our city alcohol, alcohol code does not create penalties for all violations. Um, and this provides an additional mechanism to penalize violations, which can also be in addition. So this is only for, um, license holders. This could also be for open container violations. It's like if somebody's having a party at the park and doesn't go and get a permit. Or if somebody fails to get the 24-hour catering permit and is out somewhere else. So in addition to, uh, suspension, revocation of licenses, this provides another, another level of enforcement options.
And a judge would decide what to do?
No, that, well, that could also be, this, so this also allows, for example, my office or the police department, or even council, to, um, request a, that a fine via SSS rather than something else.
Councilman Weisenberg?
Panita, on this addition here, do we need to also add, um, for second offense, third offense stuff, or just is this what you're seeing needs to be done?
This is just, um, the penalty is up to, so that the discretionary is up, would also be discretionary. Um, if somebody was assessed only a fine of $50, um, or a fine of, you know, $300, which could have within, fills within this penalties for the number of violations.
I was just looking at it as a, a open container at the park, right? If you're in violation of that once, you could get up to a $750 fine twice. Could never have a permit again, stuff like that. I didn't know if that needs to kind of be implemented? Just on that aspect of things, a liquor license holder, you know, $750 fine, second time, third time you lose, lose it, right? I did, that's why I'm asking if we need to do something also.
We can, we could, we certainly can review how, how those are done in regard to license holders, in regard to the penalties that would need to be assessed within the ordinance, because it does lay out exactly what happens, suspension or revocation.
Okay, thank you.
Well, and I was going to say with the license holders, um, there, you know, if it, if it continues to happen, then there is suspension, revocation. So, any further discussion? Seeing none, please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting has closed, the motion passes with six ayes.
All right, if there's nothing else that anybody wants to bring before this body? Seeing none, I will, uh, adjourn this meeting at 8:57. Our next meeting will be August 20th, uh, 2024. Thank you all.